The flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to say a couple of words before we get going. It's a very, John, it's a very solemn day. It's been a very solemn week. Emotions are high. My emotions are very high. And just a few moments ago, sadly, I received word that the young man who has been fighting for his life at C A M C with a bullet wound to his head has passed away. And I'm extremely sorry, saddened for that. I think it would be good for all of us to take a deep breath, a moment of silence for the grief and the anger and the shooting. And the safety of our responding police department and the fact that, thank God, none of them have been injured. But it's a sad time. It's a time we need to work together. We need to, I've had a number of meetings the past couple of days. There's a spirit in Beckley that maybe we haven't witnessed or appreciated for a long time. And it's my hope and prayer that these efforts going forward will begin to heal the community, begin to instill in the young people the fact that there's much more to life than what we've seen in the past 10 days. So with that, let's observe a moment of silence, and then we'll come to order. Amen. Thank you. All righty. So this is the regular scheduled council meeting for April 25th, 2023. We'll come to order. And our first order of business is approval of the minutes from the workshop dated April 4th, 2023. That was a workshop during which Corey presented the West Virginia Land Trust and discussed the wonderful possibility with that 800, 800 or so acres that we'll be working with for the Piney Creek Gorge Reserve. So very good. So do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Do we have a motion, second, approve minutes of the workshop dated April 4th? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, reading approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting dated April 11th, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, second, approve the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of April 11th, 2023. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, reading approval of the minutes for the special meeting on April 18th at the early morning hour of 8:30 a.m., where council, I thought it was wonderful that we had everybody in attendance here. We had all seven members at 8:30 in the morning to lay the levy, which is required on that Tuesday in April to do so, and then to submit that approval to the state. So thank you very much, and I would entertain a motion to approve of the minutes of that special meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, second, approve the minutes of the special county, special council meeting dated April 18th, 2023. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Next, we have three members, and we'll vote on them separately. We have two members of the current Human Rights Commission who have agreed to re-enlist for the next, is it a two-year or a three-year term?
Three-year.
Three-year term. So the first is, who's agreed to serve another three, now I see that now in the minutes, another three-year term on the Human Rights Commission is Donna Ellison. If we have a motion to approve Donna, that would be appreciated.
Second.
Have a motion, second, approve Donna Ellison to re-enlist for a service of a three-year term on the Human Rights Commission. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next, renewal of Danielle Stewart's three-year term on the Human Rights Commission. Do we have a motion to approve Danielle?
Second.
We have a motion, second, approve Danielle's re-enlisting to serve three years on the Human Rights Commission. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. I think Susan notified council within the past 10 days that this next nominee, who has agreed to serve a three-year term, just coming into the commission, her name is Sheila Hamlet, and if there's any discussion, I would hear that now. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Sheila Hamlet.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve Sheila Hamlet to the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by a like sign, that motion carries. Thank you. Down to old business, several members of council, Mr. Sofer and Mr. Dunlap and Ms. Bullock, visited the new Stratton Elementary School today, which was a magnificent visit. I think everybody would agree. They've left no stone unturned to make the new Stratton Elementary a showplace not only for Beckley and Raleigh County, but for the nation. They've assured us that they're already on the list for national recognition for this magnificent facility. So that's pretty cool.
And Mayor, I would just like to add, for Stratton alumni, if any of you all know any Stratton alumni, they have some memorabilia. They are still looking for some more memorabilia for the school.
Right. Yeah, they've dedicated an unbelievable museum, actually, for that memorabilia. They'll have a video on a loop, which will consist of interviews from former alumni that will run constantly, and then they have a very large room for memorabilia and pictures and other things that are very special to this historic high school that contributed so much to the community. So.
Even the backdrop for this, this video TV is like brick from the old building.
Yeah.
Some of the stonework laying on the bottom of it, it's really a nice feel right there. The floors are fantastic. They're just terrazzo, like this particular floor here, but it's got like paw prints in it and stripes in the floor, and it's just, it's state of the art. It really is.
We did everything we could not to take pictures because we want everyone to be excited and see it in its finished setting, but that was really difficult because, I mean, the kids of this area need everything that is offered in the bigger and more affluent neighborhoods, the STEM activities. I'm so proud that we'll be able to offer that to our children locally.
The gymnasium.
They said they would tear the building down like June the 7th would be when they would move the front building away, and they'd put a humongous playground in the front with fencing and make it, make it really impressive.
Twenty million.
Twenty million dollars building there.
Exciting.
Yeah. It's magnificent. Yeah.
Yeah, something every one of us can be proud of.
Yeah. I think they wiped your paw prints off after you left.
Did they?
Yeah.
The gymnasium, oh my God. Everybody's going to want to go.
That was very nice. I'm sorry. One thing, a couple of other things under old business. Tomorrow morning, I have the honor of signing on the city's behalf memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the West Virginia Land Trust, which involves that 800-acre piece of property in the Piney Creek Gorge, which we're so excited and hopeful for. And then on, excuse me, on Thursday, Corey Lilly will have his second focus group meeting with the representatives and our consultants from Destinations By Design. We'll get an update on what they're working on as far as publicity for our area, outdoor recreation, and their progress on a branding opportunity and something they're working on for the city of Beckley, along with their recommendations this early on on future downtown development. So we're excited about that. So that's, I think that's about all I have under old business. Does anybody else, any member of council, have anything under old business?
Mayor, it's really not old business per se, other than I would like to thank Bishop and Heart of God. I mean, we already knew it wasn't a church to go to for a checkup from the neck up. You are, you are filled, or you're not alive if you don't attend that church and get something. And Bishop really stepped up for the community, and it was, it was a fantastic program. So I mean, I just want to, I just want to thank, I mean, I want to thank that temple because honestly, if we've, every time the community needs to come together, Bishop is there making sure that everyone's head is right, and he is such a blessing. So that may not be the PC thing to say, but I really do appreciate his energies in our town, what he brings.
And I totally agree, and I concur with your comments. Bishop Sims has always stepped up. I think Chief Wills will remember when we had a training session for firefighters to learn how to take that firefighter exam. This has been six or seven, maybe eight years ago. Bishop Sims sponsored that at his church, so he's always there.
Successful.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, he has a servant's heart.
He does. He really does. Yeah. Thank you. Anything else from any member of council under old business?
Yes, sir. I know in the paper there was an announcement that the swimming pools would be closed, you know, for this coming season, and I know there's a lot of disappointed people about that, and I've heard some news, you know, from you and Leslie and a few, and I was wondering if you could kind of bring us up to speed on where we are in that situation.
I'll be glad to, and I'll ask Leslie to chime in. The theme is, we are not giving up. As we speak, the Pam's crew at Public Works is patching the cracks and checking for the drains, the filters, everything that will get the New River Park pool. I think the Black Knight pool is off the table for this year. We have heard some news, Leslie's worked hard in the past few days. It was, it was kind of humorous in a way that once we were forced to say, we don't have a pool manager, we don't have lifeguards, we have no choice, from the health department, from our insurance carrier, we have no choice but declare, to declare that the pools won't open. Well, since that word hit the street, and Leslie can chime in on this, people said, golly, that must be serious. Let me see if I can make a contribution here, and let's see if I can take that exam to become certified. And without, you know, I think we have a glimmer of hope and that we can do that. Leslie, do you have?
No, we're working on a few things. It's kind of preemptive to say. I don't want to say or mention people's names who have applied. I mean, I can't do that until we offer them a position, but some people have come forward, and we are working with a couple other people. We're working with the local staffing agency as well, and that's a possibility.
Well, that's wonderful.
What?
I mean, some people.
It was never lifeguards. We never said lifeguards this year. Hawaii has really stepped up. They did their part by starting classes in January, and they cut them through. They've not been as successful as they had hoped, but they did so far, and they still have classes coming up in May. They've already certified 22, which is way more than they ever had before. So I never really thought it was going to be lifeguards, but we knew what it was like last year to have lifeguard without a manager. And we knew that this year, to be as safe as we possibly could, that we needed a strong manager. Sharon Dempsey, as I said to you all, she had made it look so effortless for so long that we didn't realize how hard she was going to be to replace. And we're coming off of a pandemic, and that pool's been open since 1973, '72, '73?
Two.
'72, so, and 47 years, we've only been closed two years. And that was the 20 of the epidemic in '21 because of the lack of lifeguards. We were only able to open Black Knight. So I think out of 47 years, to only be closed for two years is a pretty good record. And if you've heard me mention a study, we've talked with the Destination By Design people, and there are people, the pool is 50, getting close to 50 years old, and it's well past its life expectancy, and we're going to have to have a structural engineer at some point come in and tell us, because we certainly don't want it to fail sometime while we have it filled with water. But as we move forward, we need voices that are experts in the field to say what the trends are in the 21st century. Do we need an Olympic-sized swimming pool? We're not thinking about certainly doing away with aquatics facility, but is this what we need, an Olympic-sized swimming pool with a deep well? We'd like to keep the water slide, maybe make the pool a little smaller, put a slash park in, but it would behoove us, I think, to give the advice of an expert who does this all over communities, all sizes, what is working and what's best. Looking forward, I'd hate to, you know, encourage the city to undertake a new aquatics facility and then never be, never be able to have it open because of staffing issues. Although Noah, who's here with us, he did tell me that industry says that the staffing problem will last at least until 2025, and then we'll see things begin to tighten, I mean, loosen up over all sectors. So just some of the concerns and things that as we look forward.
Is there no one in your department that you could temporarily put as a manager? Just, I mean, over the one pool, I mean?
We have considered that. We've considered that, but also, yeah, in the summertime, we operate the leagues, which are incredibly paper-intensive. We have the League of Woodrow, we have Ryan Neighbors League. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do the Stratton, which we have done for probably, I don't know, the last 15 years because they're tearing the building down. The mayor did talk to Superintendent Price and assured us that we could have them, that we can go back there. So.
At the new school.
She pays, you know, she does an awful lot of paperwork in the summertime. She does all the builds for the pool, and she's my recreation person. I don't have that many full-time people, and that's why we run a large department off of, you know, other than, I'm under recreation, and I think I have maybe two or three other people under recreation, and some of those are maintenance. So we have looked to that, and I'm hiring a new person, and we hired her last year, but she was a teacher, and she had to fill out her, her obligation to the school, and she's coming on, but we have designated her, and she doesn't have any management experience. We've designated her as a program person. So we've talked about that, but it is, and, you know, it's a full-time job. I mean, it's, it's not somebody.
We had the requirement that pool manager also be certified.
Well, and the reason that we chose that is last year, well, every year. It's not just last year. You have somebody call in late, you have somebody have to leave for a doctor's appointment, you have somebody sick, and if you're just right at where you are, then you have to close either water slide or maybe close the pool down. But if the pool manager is a certified lifeguard, it's just going to be a matter of calling somebody in, you can keep the pool open. We have a lot of daycares that come, and once you get those kids in the water, they don't like to be taken out of the water because you've lost a lifeguard. So we've never not had a certified lifeguard be the pool manager, except for last year. So we've looked at, you know.
As this progresses, can we be informed? Because I know after last meeting, they got put on Facebook that the pool was shut down. My phone blew up, news media, the public, they're going to reach out to us. We're at the front line. They're going to call us, and I sent them an email that night, so everybody up here and you, and we never received a response, but it was all over the news the next day. And I spoke to some council people up here, and it's bothered them as well because we were, I mean, just hit, blindsided, had no idea that this was, you know, happening, and it's all over the news, and we cannot answer the public, the people that put us here, if we do not know the information. So I just, I think, speaking for about everyone, that can we please be involved? Like, if we say, hey, we're open, can we know for the media? And if we're closing, can we know too? Because, I mean, it was a crazy Tuesday night for my phone personally. I can't speak for everyone, but the news media and the public really hit me off guard. I had no answer, and I feel, being a councilperson, I feel, you know, almost makes you feel stupid because you don't know what's going on.
Oh, and I know that, and I'm sorry about that. They do me the same way. I have, there have been days that I have been called, and it's just late at night, early in the morning, and they're just pushing for an answer. And the documents that I've sent you today, you know, it's, I've been talking about it all along, and I guess it was just, I'm sorry, it was neglectful, but it was just, you're so entrenched in doing what you're doing and trying to do, and.
And that's what I'm just asking.
And if they even hear like a bit of, well, like I was on the roundtable, and I said, I just really don't think we're going to be open, we're trying, and then the phone, like you said, the phone starts, well, what do you mean? Well, I need a, I need a comment, I need this, and you're doing that, plus you're trying to actually actively still recruit people too, though, so. But I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you emailed me and I didn't respond.
I sent an email to you and everyone up here on Tuesday about, probably about two hours after the meeting, because an individual from the public that spoke to you put on Facebook, and then it took off like wildfire.
Oh, well, I'm sorry about that. That was just an offside conversation.
We seem to be the fall guys here, all seven of us, and we, you know, they, it almost sounded like the city council didn't do the right thing to, you know, keep the pool going or make that extra effort. But we did. I mean, last year, you think there was one asking for $130,000 for this pool people, and I believe every one of us voted yes, ma'am.
Oh, you've always been supportive of anything that, that we've tried to do, and if that, I just didn't, that conversation was just happenstance, you know? I didn't realize that it was going to happen, and, and we were discussing it, and I just said, I don't think it's going to happen, and that was something I didn't realize that was going to happen, I'm sorry.
Just to add, if you want, I just.
I don't remember getting an email, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm thrilled we have this many people participating in local government, and they probably don't know all of your energies toward Escape Park over at Bayou, another part of town that enjoys having a nice park. Could you give us an update on how things are going with respect to your energies with Escape Park and that playground area that we're expanding?
Well, they have had to push it back a little bit. They were supposed to start working where we removed the pirate ship. They were supposed to start working last week, and then they moved it to the end of May, but then I just got an email that said they would be starting the first of May, like they had originally anticipated. It took them a little longer to get their ducks in a row because of supply chain, and also the company that we contracted to do it, we have to do it with whoever they want because, to keep the warning intact.
Right.
And so they're coming in, and they will do that, and hopefully by the end of May, we'll be able to cut a ribbon on a big, beautiful new toy over at Freedom Park.
There's not a lot of press for those energies.
Well, we, well, Josie's been really good about, when she talks to me, it's been in the articles, every, you know, for everything that we don't do, there's been something that we do do, and she's been really good about following through with that, and.
And Scott Avenue Park is near completion, which is amazing.
And it looks great.
There'll be a ribbon cutting there soon.
And it's, we'll open.
Barbara Avenue has.
We've got, well, we've got the equipment for Barbara and Glenn both, but once again, we're dependent on Pam to, there's some excavation at both of those parks that need to happen before we can get those.
I know it's not directly related to the pool, but I think it bears attention.
Yeah, and then we, you know, of course, we work on Bayou, we do that as well, and we had an earmark in for the Skate Park, and unfortunately, we didn't get it, but I understand there's maybe some kind of good news about the earmark for a community center. We passed the first hurdle for that one, so we'll have a community center, a new community center, and all the new equipment up at Maxwell Hill, and the only park that we will have in our system, which we have 13 parks that have, has not been refurbished, will be Rejett.
Great. Okay, anything else from any member of council under old business? Anything from any member of council under new business?
I have one thing, Mayor. This, it's kind of got released, but has it, on May 6th, will be the first. This has kind of got released, but has, on May sixth, will be the first annual Battle of the Badges at Greater Beckley Christian School. Beckley PD, West Virginia State Troopers, Rowley County Sheriff's Department, SRJ will all be participating in the charity basketball game where the proceeds will go to Greater Beckley. Admissions is donation only, will have some door prizes and some raffles and stuff like that. The first game will be at nine AM, and that'll be Beckley PD versus SRJ, and then following at ten fifteen, the West Virginia State Troopers will play the Sheriff's Department. Championship game's looking around three o'clock right now, and we're hoping to do this yearly, and hopefully we can get more agencies in it as time goes along. But May sixth, starting at nine, and a big, big game will be at three, and I think Chief will be trying to bring him a championship.
Mm-hmm. Great. One thing I would mention, we have a spunky little point guard who happens to be our city attorney. I don't know if he's going to be able to play tonight. He's pretty darn good.
I got a jersey for you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. Anything else from a member of council on our new business?
Yeah, I have a comment. I want to see Chief Bailey.
Chief Bailey came out the first charity game, he's.
I can see him.
When they put the fire department.
I'm an old-school Hooper.
He had his jersey on and everything.
Yeah.
Chief Bailey, remember the mayor was on the state basketball team in sixty-five, so.
He's gave me some pointers.
He's given you pointers.
Maybe they'll give you a few seconds.
Yeah. Back when I played, they still had jump ball after every score, so, anyhow, but thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else from any member of council on their new business? Okay, we're done with the public comments. We have several people signed up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. First, on the docket is Mary West.
I am sorry to be back here once again, but, Mayor, I didn't want to disappoint you. You say I'll see you in two weeks, so I'm here.
Well, you know, my favorite TV show is Entertainment Tonight.
Hey.
When I can't watch it, I know that Mary West will be here.
Amen on that.
Okay.
All right. And I want to first thank Captain Morgan and Code Enforcement for getting ready to take care of one of my problems.
Good.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like for you all, I keep calling Charleston, they keep saying, city council would have to file for state and federal grants. We need more money for our law enforcement. We need them to be able to put cameras in areas that things are happening. And I have not called law enforcement by my speeders because they have had enough on their plate the last few days, weeks, whatever, but I have not called. But they're still down there acting like I live at a speedway, and I am tired of it.
You know, Mary, again, we've had this conversation.
And we're going to keep having.
You know, what time do you get up in the morning?
Five AM.
I'm going to pick you up at five-thirty tomorrow morning, and we're going to go out on LaRue, and we're going to survey the traffic, because I've done that.
Okay.
And I've seen no speeders, I've seen nobody that does not observe the two stop signs from South Canola to Eisenhower, but I want, I want you to be there. So can I arrange to pick you up in the morning?
Well, why don't we do this? I would allow you to sit at my home, and why don't we watch the speeders? Because that's a new TV show for you at five in the morning. Now, I'm going to go through the chain of command.
We'll work out the details.
Yes. I'm going to go through the chain of command. I'm starting again here.
Chief, in response to Mary's comment on grants, I know the police department receives from the governor's.
Highway safety.
Highway safety program, it's an enormous amount of grants. You know, right offhand, the dollar amount of grants that the city police department receives.
I do not, right off the top of my head, no, but it is a.
But we approve them once a year, and I'm going to say they're in the six-hundred-thousand-dollar range, there's normally two grants. And I think it's around six-hundred thousand that anybody on council has.
That's right, safety money.
Yeah, so, so our police department's well-funded for grants for traffic control.
Okay, well, it's not being allocated and used down there on LaRue Avenue.
Well, we have.
Because, all right, let me finish, please.
Okay. Billy has the time, Governor.
Now, I'm doing the chain of command today. I'm here at Beckley City Council, and I need help down there.
Okay.
Now, if I can't get help here, my next stop would be Charleston.
Okay, I recommend that.
With Jim Justice.
Sure, I'll give you his number tomorrow.
And his twin, baby dog, that look like.
What will you do?
I'm going there and get some help sometime, wait, if I got to push it on up to the top.
I highly recommend it if you're not satisfied.
I'm not, I'm not satisfied.
Okay, your time's up.
I've been doing this, well, see, you took a minute of my time, sir.
Okay, next.
Now, I spent three minutes.
Thank you, Mary.
But I'll give it back to you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
We'll look forward to that.
All right.
If not sooner.
If not sooner.
Five-thirty one morning.
Well, okay. Yes, it is.
Pick a little coffee, and I'll be there.
All right.
Noah Cap, next. Three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Noah Cap, and I'm with At Work, a staffing company in downtown Beckley. When I saw the news last week that my pools were not opening, I reached out to Leslie Baker to discuss using my company to help find lifeguards. Leslie was excited about the prospect of us helping to get the pool staffed, but said that anything like this would need to be, would need the approval of the city council. Without any agreement or contract being signed, I had my team start recruiting lifeguards. In a matter of four days, they have recruited seven lifeguards. We have also secured funding from local community members to cover the entire cost of the lifeguard certification training. On top of this, we have reached out and discovered that lifeguard training classes at the YMCA begin as early as this Friday and have plenty of openings. I'm asking the city council to approve this request to allow At Work to recruit for the city pools. With current projections, we are looking at being able to do this for less than half the cost of what you paid an outside company last summer. If you allow us to step into this position, I believe that we can open the pools and keep them open all summer long. Thank you.
Very good. So I suggest that, and I think I'm right, Billy, Leslie, a proposal from Noah and this company would be in order for city council to review?
Yes, sir.
And that would be an agenda item on the.
I believe Leslie should already have the proposal, so.
A basic one, we, Jen and I worked on it a little bit today, and it's gone to human resources to look at.
I should mention, we also talked about the manager. She's got something lined up. I've got a girl who is really good, she's a schoolteacher on break right now, and she's going to go through the certification training.
Okay, good.
So she's ready this Friday, if you guys are open for her.
Okay. Let's see, Alicia Dowden. Three minutes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Hello, I am Alicia Dowden. My nephew just passed in that shooting. I am a twenty-year veteran of the Navy. I fought hard for this country just to come home in two thousand and fifteen, and now to see that we're in another war zone. I do not understand it. Last about two weeks ago, there was at least forty to fifty children playing in East Park, and now, out of fear, there are no children playing outside. They are not even riding their bike. They're not doing anything. And I understand there are churches, I get it, and everybody is saying everything. I just want to know what you're going to do about it. In the military, you have results, not excuses. That's what you have. And I want to see something done immediately. You may not catch any of these people, because people may not want to talk out of fear. We need to be realistic. But I have spoken to children out there, and they go to school, and before they graduate from high school, they don't have the resources to have jobs. So how do they, what do they do? They go to, they get their money from somewhere else. So I just need to know what you're going to do. You need to start in the schools first, the schools. We need to get to them. We need all leaders to step up. I come from military, all the leaders spoke up. You would be a senior chief or a master chief mayor, and our master chief didn't take no mess from nobody, and I need you to not take no mess from nobody. You get with these people, the police or whoever is C word set, please, I'm begging you.
Sure, we're working.
I just don't know.
We have used today, there is an awful lot of activity, trying to determine those who were responsible. We have a partnership with not only our internal investigator, but also with the state police, the FBI. I mean, we're working on it.
Yes, sir.
And now, it's heartbreaking, it's heartbreaking that we lose young people. And I'm, it, it makes me so sad that I'm, I can't say I'm as upset as you are, I didn't lose a loved one, but it's very sad as mayor that we're experiencing this. But by the same token, and it's sad to say, but these young people, recent, a certain age, and they make the decision that they're going to somehow get hold of a gun, that somehow they're going to strive for street credit or whatever they do to appear to be in charge of things. And what scares me the most is, and as heartbroken as I am, that seven or eight young people shoot at each other. Back in the old days, if I had a fight when I was younger, we'd settle it with our fists. We'd get down behind the old wreck building, and we'd fight it out. Because I was always glad when the guy I was supposed to fight didn't show up because I wasn't much of a fighter. But today, the go-to instrument is a gun. Now, I don't, and the thing that scares me the most, and I talked to chief and deputy chiefs this morning, our men were on the scene two minutes after they were called. Well, in two minutes, these young people still could have been firing randomly. I mean, there were a hundred shells found in one instant, there were fifty-two shells found in another instant. What if by chance, an innocent policeman who's here to protect and serve catches one of these bullets, gets caught in a, in a crossfire between these youngsters who use that as a way to settle their differences? Scares me to death. So I'm sad for the young people, I want to get it fixed. I thank God that none of our police officers have been injured, but you look around, you know, there was a post-prom party somewhere in the south that was a happy occasion. It was a birthday party out in the Midwest, it was a happy occasion. It ends up in gunfire. I don't know, Beckley's not unique in this situation, but we are working as hard as we can. We'll have more patrols, right, chief? In, in East Park, and you'll see, you'll see not only city police cars, you'll see state police officers, you'll see unmarked cars, there might be FBI agents, but we're doing all we can to, to step it up and to make the community safe. And really, that's about all I can say at this point.
Can Chief Bailey just tell us a little something, just give her a little insight?
We are working around the clock. I have eight to nine officers working around the clock to try to solve this and to stem this violence that's going on in the community. I'll do everything I personally can. I've worked myself all weekend out there. So we're doing everything I, we can, I promise.
Can I make a comment about this?
Sure. Um, I feel like I understand this a little bit better, the fact that I'm twenty-six, most of the people that was in this situation, I went to school with them. I was raised right over here off Highland Street. I, I don't know who your nephew is, and I'm about ninety, probably ninety-five percent sure, I probably went to school with him, and I've known him since I was young, and I understand that this, I guess, you know, era and how things are. I have many friends, I've watched them get buried, and, you know, they went down the wrong path. And one really positive thing that I've seen since I've come on council, chief's brother, Dave Bailey, he's got, what's his position? Community?
Community Resources Officer.
Community Resource Officer. He is doing really big things right now, trying to get events, like he had the one over at, my mom's.
Lewis and Ritchie.
Lewis and Ritchie. And he's, he's doing the best he can right now to get these officers in these communities, and I believe that's going to be a really big thing coming from it, because a lot of people my age and younger in this generation, that they see cops, and because of the media and the news, the big mainstream, you know, it's, it's this versus that, but we're Beckley, we're West Virginians, like, we're not that big mainstream you see online, on TV, and I think our, our officers getting together with the community, bringing the community together, is the best thing we can do. And like I said, his brother's doing great things, and I'm working with him, trying to get some things in place, and, I mean, it's a sad situation. There's a lot of young people that are supposed to be our future, and they've had to choose these bad paths for different reasons, as you've said, and I hate it. And like I said, it's close to me, because it's most of these people I went to school with, and it's, you know, friends, and from elementary up, and it, it's, it's personal, and I'm sorry for your, your loss, and I'm sorry for everybody in the community, and I wish I personally could find a way to stop this, but I promise you, we're, we're trying, and the officers are trying. Chief Bailey, he's, he's really stepped up and got the department, I think, in a strong way, and I think they're going to take care of this the best that we can.
Well-stated, and just to emphasize that a little more, we now have a police precinct at Lewis Ritchie in the same unit where the poor young child was hammered to death. We, we now, we cleaned that up, we have a precinct there, and as Cody said, Dave Bailey and his crew sponsored a picnic and a, a party with ice cream and whatnot for the kids at Lewis Ritchie, and it was extremely well-attended. And, and as you said, that's where we need to start. We need to start with these young people to show that there are certain influences that will allow them to reach their potential. I, I get scared, I think that some kids get to be in junior high, and they're looking for something to cling to, they're looking for somebody to give them recognition, and before long, somebody comes along with the improper motives, whether it's sell this for me, buy that for me, and, and that starts a cycle that ends up the thing we're mourning today. It just ends up that way, and it, I think, breaks my heart, it really does. But I think that what we're doing at Lewis Ritchie's a good example. Again, chief's brother, Dave, you'll see him on, on the street with, conversing with people at different events, and he headed up this, this picnic party at Lewis Ritchie. So that's the other end of, of the, of the equation that we're, that we're working on. If we can get to these young people, I know Janine made a plea in her article today, which was very good, to somehow get these young folks interested in church. You know, our churches have so many wonderful events for young people, and when you're kindergarten, preschool, or maybe in the early grades, that's, that's where your, your life patterns are molded, and when that temptation comes along, you shove it away and say, I don't have time for that, I've got better things to do in my life. You concur with that, Janine? No? Okay.
I would like that if they would, as far as Woodrow is the school that does house East Park and East Beckley children, that they go in and try to get with the counselors and see if there's anything that the counselors can do, rather put them, I am a nurse, I know that they have nursing schools, LPNs, RNs, CNAs, but also there are places like construction or anything like that, maybe you can get construction companies to sponsor or do apprentice training, as they do in Norfolk, Virginia, they do apprentice training before they hire them on. Maybe that, if it showed interest, it may be triggered that they can do something else rather than get money another illegal means, and that's just my solution.
I think that's a great suggestion.
If you could, figure that out.
Companies like. Companies like Will General have been very responsive for needs of young people. Chick-fil-A has been very responsive.
Or the bigger companies like a law office, like if you want to be a paralegal, a law office, come in and see what they do. A police officer, you can do that. Engineering, we have the tree cutting, real estate, those are the things. Because those $10, $12, $15 jobs, some people cannot survive and they're taking care of more than just themselves. So I'm just asking that maybe y'all have the power here. And I'm asking for some solution to that of helping these children that's coming up once they hit middle school, Beckley Stratton, and we have Park Junior High. Let's see what we can do about getting them there.
Today I had a meeting with Jay Riss, the CEO of the Y. We talked about that very subject and the fact of, of getting a group of volunteers together who have the respect of young people, who young people look up to, and to do exactly as you're saying, to influence these young people, to give them some direction, give them some options about the, the right things to strive for in life. So there are things going on behind the scenes and, and we'll, we'll do as you say. And again, I'm, I'm very saddened by your loss.
And I'm here to help whenever.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have to go. Thank you.
Christine Basden? Three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. The question has repeatedly been asked if we need an Olympic-sized pool in Beckley, and the answer is yes. Talking points like profitability of the pool has been used, but is Black Knight profitable? The pool is a city amenity. It provides quality of life for all and prevention for our youth. I'm calling upon the city to create an aquatics recreation director that would implement programming such as swimming lessons and water aerobics. We need an incentive program for at-risk and, and low-income children and their families. They can seek grants to fund these programs and pay for those certifications. There is enough year-round work available to warrant paying for this additional city position. This will combat the yearly issues we've been seeing year after year. It is not enough just to open the pool. We need to see bigger investments from the city to ensure the existence, maintenance, and the future of our pools and the expansion of other outdoor programming. We cannot continue to ask for our community to show up if the city does not invest in us.[787.38][787.38][applause]
I want to say, in my discussion today, I learned something. YMCA does have a year-round swim class lesson program. So it might be good for these folks who have children, who they would like to learn to swim.
With all due respect, Mayor, the YMCA is not here. I am asking the city to step up.
Okay, thank you very much, Christine. It's always a pleasure. Braxton Berry?
This is my first time ever being here, and I just came to just talk to all of y'all as a people and share with you what's been on my heart, especially what's been happening these last few days. I've lived here my whole life in Beckley, West Virginia. I remember a time when children played outdoors until the streetlights came on. I remember ice cream carts in neighborhood grocery stores. Our parks was full of family playing and outside, in and outside the pools. Someone, someone was always barbecuing at the parks or at the homes in the neighborhoods. I remember the older people loving the sound of us children playing through the yards with no care in the world as they rocked on the porch giving praise to God. There was a time that this place was a family-oriented place. It was a safe place. But look where we are now, afraid of our lives, our elders' lives, and most of all, our children's lives. We have taken away what used to be a safe space here in our community, and we have allowed it to be replaced with a horrible epidemic such as gun and drug violence. I'm very disappointed in my black community, for we have always been jealous of one another. We mistreat one another. This war between us goes deep as the point, if I'm light-skinned and you're dark-skinned, then there is jealousy and envy between us. This past Sunday, there were more white people marching in East Beckley than there were black people.[910.57][910.57][applause] And you know why? It's because since the beginning to the end of slavery, we feel our voice isn't heard. Some of us have openly said, I've stopped voting because I've given up on the chance of there ever being change and your voice ever being heard. Well, I'm here to tell you that change will never happen until we realize who we are as a people and as God's children. We need to link together like a mighty chain in unity and take back what belongs to us, which is our freedom and our peace. And with that, let there be justice for those that have lost their lives and those that lost their way due to drugs and substance abuse. We also need positive outlets for people who struggle with addictions. I myself, I myself struggle with addiction. And I remember I would drive around in my car all day trying to find something to do to take my mind off that addiction and to defeat it once and for all. But there was nowhere to go, no safe space to run to, and that brings on more anxiety, more depression and pain, which leads to heavier addictions, overdoses, and suicidal tendencies. We all, as a people, have to stop being selfish and form together a team of all races, creed and color, and bring back our community. We are talking about saving lives and protecting lives. So let's unite under God and stand together as a whole and bring change starting today.[1004.25][1004.25][applause]
Very good.[1006.25][1006.25][applause] Hi, Basden?
Hello? And good evening. Being here as a 15-year-old attending Woodrow Wilson High School and seeing all of this revolve and happen around me is just crazy. A highly debated problem that continues to grow in our society is the gun control. Many people carelessly take advantage of gun use and manipulate the tool without much thought to any repercussions. Many lives have been lost due to people legally or illegally obtaining guns and taking matters upon themselves to be executors and holding other people's lives in their hands. There should be no reason I should be scared to walk to my bus stop because of gun violence. There should be no reason that I need to worry about leaving my house to go and hang out with my friends and worry about a shooting. Every so often, the social media news feeds floods with reports of mass shootings and with information that family mourns and grieves of dead sons and daughters. In days that follow, calls to action to be heard and their demand to be changed, but have there been any? No. But let's talk about the pools, especially New River Pool. Closing the pool is not one of your, been one of your brightest ideas, nor will it be the last. You say kids need more things to do during the summer to entertain themselves, and with closing the pool, that wasn't a great idea. Because Lake Stephen isn't close and kids that are handicapped, they can't really get there because it's not very accessible to wheelchairs. And especially that people who can't stand on their feet long. They can't walk. They need stability. The only pool that isn't closed was the police pool, and you have to pay yearly to get into it. And most people don't even have the money for that. It's almost $200 to go to that pool. And coming from a poor home, I, we couldn't afford to do that. Thank you.[1157.25][1157.25][applause]
Pamela Boyd.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to speak.
Okay, all righty. Tina Pennell? Good afternoon.
First, I want to thank Mayor Rapald for showing up. He showed up to several things last year and this year for me. And I just want to thank you. I don't need to go into detail, but he is out there. He's working. He has his, his own personal boots on ground, and, and I just want to give you that accolade. But the purpose of me being here is, it's time, and I feel as if my role is to shift the atmosphere, okay? Things are moving, breaking, and shifting, and we will shift the atmosphere when we lock arms. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of the world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. So we must lock arms. We don't want any more blood shed, and we can do this together. And with me saying this, I think that it's time that you leaders adopt Juneteenth while we work on getting a 501(c)(3). I can't keep sending letters to churches and hope for $100 to come back. We're needing more funding. It's now a national holiday. Please reach out to me. Please assist, and, and we'll continue to press on and, and, and share the fun event and the, and oh, homage to the Juneteenth festival. So I'm, I'm making a call to help. I, I also need you to messenger me if you want to be a part of creating a new committee. It's just me and two other ladies that can't even lift a crate. It's just me. So I need your assistance, and it doesn't matter if, if you're too busy, send a delegate. And the police has done a very good job of doing that, sending delegates. So I want to continue to do events for Juneteenth, but I need everybody's assistance. So please reach out.
Thank you, Tina.[1317.51][1317.51][applause] Tina, thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you.
Hello. I have a couple of things I wouldn't touch on within this quick three-minute time span. First is at my home. Beaver Avenue across, with the cross street of Westmoreland. The streetlight has been out for over a month. With that being said, it's pitch black dark. I almost hit someone who was walking up the hill, but unfortunately, I can't, I can't see them. That also entails, brings us to what is currently happening in the city of Beckley. I remember earlier this weekend, I watched the news story where the police officer said that they don't see a rise in the gun violence and they do not see a rise in the deaths that are going on right now. I can stand here today because my child, who is 19 years old, who graduated from military school, has been affected by each and every single one of these deaths that have happened within the last six days. He is terrified. I have a 17-year-old, and there's no other worse feeling in this world than to have a 17-year-old child of your own. And you're in your own home, minding your business, cooking dinner, and you open up Facebook and you see the fact that there is a 17-year-old child that's been shot on the trail. Now, I remember when the trail was put in the city of Beckley, it was for people to utilize in safety. I have not one time seen a bike officer ride that trail. I have not seen a cop car just ride that trail. But yet, there are no cameras. This child that was killed on that trail last week was walking home from work. There's no reason why us as a community cannot feel safe. My son is terrified just to drive to work. He's terrified to get in the car with me, just to go to the grocery store. Because as we all know, as of Thursday, may Malik Metley rest in peace, he had his wife, his pregnant wife, and his children in the car. And 32 bullets were shot at that car. When is enough enough? We need some help. I'm begging and I'm pleading. The pool being closed is not helping. Yet and still, yes, there is a policeman's pool. But what about those children that don't have vehicles in the family?
15 seconds, ma'am.
What about those kids whose parents work two, three jobs that don't have the money to get them kids into the pool? We need help. Thank you.
Thank you.[1519.91][1519.91][applause] A couple of things, Ms. Creasy. The streetlights that are out, we notify Appalachian Power, and we notify them when a resident like you tells us the light's out. We then mark that pole with a pink ribbon, a surveyor's ribbon, so that when Appalachian gets around to replacing that bulb, they'll know which pole it is. Now, I've had the same experience at my house. Sometimes it's taken six weeks. Sometimes it's only taken a couple of weeks over the years. I've been there 38 years. Now, the other thing, um, chief, I was not aware of a killing on the trail.
That the killing was not on the trail. It was up behind Raleigh General Hospital.
Yeah, it was, that killing was not on the trail. It was up on Beach Avenue behind.
Behind Wilbryne.
Behind Wilbryne. So.
I mean, in all due respect, maybe the, maybe my addresses weren't correct. I accept that. But why is it that a child could be walking from work and you just can't feel safe? Like, you know, the, the, again, when, when a mother is grieving, she's my friend, and she's grieving over her child who was just trying to get home from work, you know, and then you watch the news and then people that are supposed to, and they are at points, you know, protecting our community, they can sit back and say, well, we don't see a rise in, in gun violence. We don't see a rise in deaths. Well, how many more do we need to go? We don't want to be another block in Detroit.
Well, you know, Ms. Creasy, we're, we're all extremely upset and, and we're very frustrated as you are. We're working as hard as we can to find the guilty parties. It's not an overnight sensation.
True.
And, and in all honesty, and to be terribly blunt, if young people are bent on revenge over an incident, maybe a previous killing, if they're bent on revenge and they're willing to shoot 32 or, in one case, or 100 bullets, there's, there's, the police department can show up when we're called, but if they're bent on revenge, nobody's going to stop them. They're not going to sit back and say, well, I, I better not do this. They're going to go out and, and seek that revenge. And it's, it's a sad state of affairs that we've reached, but that's the way it is.
Is there any way we can put up more cameras?
Well, we do have a grant in process for cameras on the trail. You mentioned the trail, you know, and, and the housing authority at their units have also received grants, and the city's forwarded around $25,000 bill or billing for cameras in the past. So, you know, we're, we're working on cameras. It, it takes a while to get them in place. Now, Pam, did you get the, the location of that one pole on Highland and, or Westmoreland and Beaver?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would say, as far as rail trails concerned, you're asking about that grant. We just applied for a grant to put cameras the length of the rail trail.
The length of the rail trail.
Yeah, the length of the rail trail from Mab Scott entrance all the way out to Kroger. Hasn't been, hasn't been awarded.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a, a grant in place now, or we've applied for cameras for the entire rail trail, the 3.2 miles from Mab Scott out to, to Kroger. So we, we agree wholeheartedly with you. Pamela Hammons?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I believe Raleigh County Sheriff's Department is handling that case.
Yes, Raleigh County Sheriff's Department's handling that case because it was off of Beach Avenue, which is in Cameron.
That's probably why you get Jordan Bell.
Yeah. It's not the city.
Pamela Hammons? I'm sorry, Amanda.
I learned cursive in school.
Well, it's beautiful handwriting. I mean, it really is. My mistake.
Thank you, thank you for your time. So I'm, I'm actually here today to present an employment opportunity. opportunity through our local workforce. And I just want to say that I feel for the pain in the room. In no way do I believe that this is a solution to what our city is facing. I only meant in light of the pool situation and some employment maybe with our youth, that this might bring some solace to situations that we may be facing. So many of you may have heard about the workforce program called Empowered Employment. It's now called Transitional Jobs. I wanted to bring it to the council for the individuals that are here today because I knew that there would be people that are interested in employment for our youth. So a person only need be unemployed for 13 weeks in order to be employed through this program. They come with actual insurance provided from the federal government through workforce at time for six months of employment for 32 hours. And they can then move on after that point to incumbent work and train, workers' training, which will then pay for additional training for the individual to become acclimated in the position in which they're in and then hopefully be hired on by the position within the facility. So this is paid 100% by our workforce, 100% by the federal government to try to meet some of the unemployment that we have occurring in our city. It's wonderful for the youth because, you know, being unemployed is something that kind of comes natural with school. It's also really good for mothers and fathers or grandparents that stayed at home. So I think that this situation just needed to be applied here because the training could have definitely worked for someone that was looking for the lifeguard situation. Or if we ever run into a situation like that again, you can work with any organization, any facility, and any business in all of West Virginia. If anyone would like more copies of this, I will send them to you so that we can get involved. There's many organizations already in Raleigh County taking advantage of this. I kind of go door to door. Dollar Generals, gas stations, wherever I stop, I make sure that I give them an opportunity for this because there's now hiring signs everywhere. This could be jobs for our youth. And it's safe because they come in and they approve the site, make sure that they're under supervision during the time of employment, you know, and on top of the fact that they come with liability insurance if anything happens, you know? So I don't know if it's been spoken of this way.
Is there beginning age, 18 years old, 16?
They can get a signature from the parents at 15 years old to be approved. There's some information on here. Amanda Dawson's actually the manager over the entire program. So she used to actually work for the jobs in her program to transition and now works for workforce over the whole state.
Fifteen seconds. Wonderful.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Please.
Have you all had any contact with the federal prison of Beaver?
Has Empowered Employment?
Especially for some of the inmates that will be released into the community.
That's a wonderful idea. So basically, I connected reentry councils to Empowered Employment workforce. So Donnie should be meeting with Jeremiah Nelson sometime in the next month or so.
That bonding.
Yes. So the bonding program is really amazing for that portion there. I wanted to apply to this situation specifically, but yes, there are income guidelines on it. A person that's been economically disadvantaged in any way, been unemployed for the 13 weeks because of incarceration, you know, substance, it also applies. Also, if they've been hired or fired or let go, a layoff, in a position of a job that they've been with in the last 12 months makes them hireable through this program. That is 100% paid for six months. So and of course, it's the hopes that they get employed through the program.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In closing, I want to make one comment. It's, maybe I'm sensitive, but it's been inferred that the potential or possible pool closing is something that the city has independently decided we would do. Whether we, in your opinion, we're doing it to punish people or to take a service away from people, nobody is more concerned about having to close the pool, of course, than anybody up here on this day. A city council's already told you how they've been really beat up over this thing. Leslie Baker has worked on trying to solve this manpower problem for, well, it's a year-round project, but certainly since January, when we began to advertise. So I want to make it clear, you know, several people have spoken as if they're looking at me, saying, you're closing that pool. That's not the case. We're all working to try to keep the pool open. And that's it. I'm sorry. We've out of time for public comments. So we have motion to adjourn.[1780.01][1780.01][applause] Stayed adjourned. Thank you.